I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, do we have any additions or additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
None. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 17 meeting?
Some moves.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We're going to start off tonight, we brought a couple county flags with us, and we'd like to present a county flag, both to the Trenet family and to the mayor of Midland. I guess we'll have it over here in some of the extra space we've got here tonight.
Oh, wait a minute Scott, hold on, hold this thing in its place. Me and Jacob, who didn't know, explain it.
Don't get it upside down guys. The white flag should be upside down. Inside out. Okay, this is the flag of the county bearing the county seal. You see the date 1789, that's when Allegheny County separated from Washington County. So that was the beginning of Allegheny County as we know it. The items on the flag, you'll notice in the middle, the black points are to represent the needles of a compass and pointer is pointing west, and that's what truly made Allegheny County, we were the way west. That's where everybody moved west. You've got the shock of wheat honoring the farming heritage in the area. We've got the pick, the shovel, the coal cars honoring the coal industry, which was very important to this part of the county. There is a canal bars there, a wheel, a tire, the nine mile house honoring transportation, which transportation truly built Allegheny County, whether it was rail, canal, the national highway. Then, of course, we've got our factories that once were so prominent in the county, the church steeples, which I come over top of Martin's Mountain about 3:30 every morning coming into Cumberland, and you can always see the church steeples from that far out. And, of course, in the picture, the mountains and the streams up at the top of this. So, be a real pleasure to present one of these flags to the Trenet family for all that you've done for this county for 130 years.
Yes.
And also, Mr. Mayor, a county flag for the town. Mr. Trenet, you might as well just stay up here. We're very happy to honor the 130th anniversary of George W. Trenet and Sons, based in Lona County. We have a lot of great businesses in Allegheny County, but I don't think we have too many that's been around quite that long. So, do we have an official citation we'd like to give you?
That's on my.
Want to come up here?
Yeah.
Okay, this is an official county citation, George Trenet and Sons, Lona County, Maryland, 130th anniversary, 1885 to 2015. No credo, I was not around them.
I'm a little misted by a little bit.
Scott Christopher Trenet, fourth generation owner and operator. Whereas Allegheny County government wishes to publicly recognize the memorable occasion of the 130th anniversary of the establishment of George Trenet and Sons in Lona County, Maryland, in 1885, and whereas Scott C. Trenet represents the fourth generation of his family to own and operate George Trenet and Sons, an exceptional example of a successful independent business in small-town America. And whereas this business has survived challenges over the decades ranging from the Great Depression to natural disasters, notably the 1936, 1942, and 1996 floods, and whereas Scott C. Trenet is community-minded, working six days a week to meet the hardware and lumber needs of tri-state area residential and commercial customers. Now, therefore, we, the Allegheny County Commissioners, acknowledge the significant contribution of Scott C. Trenet and his ancestors, and extend warm wishes and sincere congratulations. This is a time to look back and appreciate, and a time to look forward and anticipate. In witness whereof, we set our hands and call the seal of Allegheny County, Maryland, to be affixed today, September 24, 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William R. Valentine, Creedby, Brody Jr., and Jacob Souchet. Once again.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a few more citations for some very honorable people that serve our county so well. First, we'd like to call Ashley Rochelle to the front with our 911 award. All right, this is the... This is an official Allegheny County citation. Beard hereby known to all, the Board of the County Commissioners deeply appreciates and highly commends Ashley D. Rochelle, 9/11 Dispatcher of the Year, 2014-2015. And this was presented September 24, 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Creedbrody, and Jake Shane. Thank you, Jake. For everybody out there, believe me, dispatcher is not just a phone operator. They go through a tremendous amount of training, a tremendous amount of stress, and we really appreciate all you do. Thank you.
I want to thank you guys as well.
Thank you.
Dick, did you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, I would just like to say at this point, first of all, Commissioner, you hit the nail right on the head with those remarks.
No, I'm a plumber, not a talker.
But, the life of a dispatcher, certainly, they give far more than what people can ever imagine, and this gives us an opportunity, once a year, to recognize somebody for their outstanding contributions to the organization. And with that being said, we certainly do appreciate what Ashley's done for the agency this year, and we have two other award recipients who are not here tonight, but I'd just like to put them on record. We have the chief's award recipient, which is Harry W. Copan, and also, we have Brian Miller, who was a recipient of the Bill Lamberson Memorial Award, and that's certainly something that means a lot to the dispatchers. And then, closing, I'd just like to add also, Commissioner, certainly, we recognize the accomplishments of the dispatchers, but this is an opportunity for me to publicly recognize the accomplishments of the communications chief, Roger Bennett, who leads those dispatchers in the efforts that they do every day, say the words.
Want everybody here to stay up? Anybody else with 911? We have another proclamation. This is National Preparedness Month. Whereas National Preparedness Month is an ideal time for all Allegheny County citizens and stakeholders to become informed about and participate in preparedness activities presented by the Federal Emergency Management Agency at ready.gov, and whereas the Allegheny County Department of Emergency Services diligently works to enhance emergency preparedness in our community, and whereas every household, commercial enterprise, and institution in our community should take the initiative to prepare and plan for any type of emergency, natural disasters, as well as potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in preparedness has human and financial benefits, decreasing both fatalities and economic devastation. Now, therefore, we, the Allegheny County Commissioners, proclaim September 2015 as National Preparedness Month in Allegheny County. Once again, signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Brody, Jake Shane, Dick. Thanks for letting it here.
Just like to say a few words about September being National Preparedness Month, and this originated out of the September 11 attacks that occurred in New York City in 2001, and certainly, if anything positive from now, this is one of those things about pushing the need for preparedness, both at the personal level and at the business level, whether it be continuity of operation plans or such. And we actively work with all organizations that want to build and enhance their preparedness. I think our state agencies' motto really rings best, and that a prepared citizen makes for a resilient community, and certainly, that's what we're trying to do, is build a resilient community.
Household hazardous waste collection event.
Yeah, okay, well, I suppose there's a path around. Having a household hazardous waste collection event on October 10, 10th, and from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds that day, it'll be free to the public, don't take anything except paint, ammunition, explosives, hazardous gases for medical or infectious waste. But everything else, we're set with batteries, solvents, spray can pans, gas cans, fire extinguishers, those sort of items. There's more information in the flyer. I'd like for people to consider the alternatives when they're buying a household hazardous waste. Think about how much do I need, so you don't have extras disposed of these events, because the weight for this book we're actually paying for, because we don't know how much the event will cost until we actually have the collection. And I'd like to thank our sponsors for this day. The Allegheny County Commissioners are sponsoring the event along with the city of Cumberland, the city of Frostburg, the town of Lona County, Advanced Disposal, and the New Zealand fertilizer company. And I appreciate their support, and I hope everybody gets a chance to come out that day and bring some of their household hazardous waste, and hopefully we'll have another event like this in the future.
Thank you. And if you lose the information she handed out tonight, go to copy that flyer on the county website.
Okay.
The invisible website.
Yeah.
Sierra wears many hats in the county here. We'll move now to Resolution Number 15-20, fiscal year 2014 through 2019, Cumberland Area Transportation Improvement Program Amendment.
So this is part of the Cumberland Area NPO, which the Commissioners act as the board. We're adding an amendment to, for the North France Industrial Park Rehabilitation Research Team project. It's a 100% A R C funded project, and we need to put it in tip in order from them to continue with it and to move forward with the county to servicing that business program.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion to move forward with Resolution 15-20?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sierra. And we'll move along to Item Number 7, Household Hazardous Waste Collection and Disposal, Intergovernmental Agreement with Maryland Environmental Services, Number 2-16-4-12.
So this goes along with the household hazardous waste event. We took advantage of Maryland Environmental Services contract with Clean Ventures, they're a company out of Baltimore that dispose of and handle the household hazardous waste. So when people come to the event, they'll actually remove it from their cars, so nobody's handling any toxic materials, and they get rid of it in a proper manner. So we're really happy to work with them. They're going to set up and shut down the event. So this is approval, hoping you guys approve the contract, so we can move forward with this and have our household hazardous waste.
Any questions or discussion? Do we have a motion to move forward?
Some moves.
Second.
All favor?
Thank you very much.
You're a winner tonight. Okay, now we'll move on to Item Number 8, Resolution 15-21, Mr. Moneyman, Jason Bennett.
Good evening, mister. What we have tonight is a resolution to approve a $461,000 USDA loan as part of the Rollins' Water Distribution Phase II project. 2% loan through USDA for 40 years, annual debt service of $16,000. The users of the system will pay for it, just like all our water and sewer loans. This is part of a bigger Rollins' project, as we've been working on for years now, it's $5.9 million in total. So this is one small piece of the puzzle. So tonight, this will just allow us to close the loan, hopefully in about two weeks, and we can proceed with the project, so just looking for your approval.
Any questions or discussion?
None.
Do we have a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
All favor? Thank you. Okay, now, as much as I really hate to do this, we're going to turn it over to the attorney, and we know how that always goes. Very, 15 words.
You said 15, and I said 12. This is a home rule bill which extends or recodifies health regulations with regard to businesses that do tattooing and piercing, and it has gone through its readings with regard to public comment, and is ready for the Commissioners to vote on its adoption.
Gentlemen, is there any further discussion on this?
It's none for me. Is there anyone in the audience that's had any questions or anything on this?
This is the third night we've had this, no public comment. Do I have a motion to pass this new code?
Some moves.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Less painful than getting a tattoo. Okay, we'll move to Item Number 10, Allegheny County Paving Contract Bid Award. There's been one small change to this, which is a good change. Actually, at the last minute, the interest rate on our loan was lowered a little bit, so that always a good thing.
I'm going to jump in before I introduce Whitney, I'd like to thank Sierra to recognize her. We had a lot of changes at Public Works, and she's jumping in, and she did transit before, now she's going a little bit of recycling and other things we do around the place. I want to introduce Whitney, Whitney Doherty. She's been with us for six months now. She's a WVU graduate. She promised me this Saturday she would go to University of Maryland, so that was kind of under contract, that's kind of the deal. Whitney's only been here for six months, and she's jumped in a lot of projects. If you look at some of the bigger projects, all the improvements out front for ADA accessibility, et cetera, out front, Whitney's taken care of. She's heavily involved in Bowling Green. We had a big storm there a year or so ago, and she's been out there handling those problems, there's a lot of those issues. She's been on the paving project, which we'll talk about a little bit, and actually, the first paving project we talked about, that Sierra talked about, that would probably be her project too. So, I'm proud to be part of the Public Works Department. We get a lot of projects done, and we have a lot of people who want to improve the county. When we interviewed Whitney, we thought that she would fit in and do the same thing, and so far, she's proved to be that, so Whitney Doherty.
Whitney, I must say, it's okay to be a WVU fan, because there's lots of them in this area. Since I got a niece and a nephew that's graduates are there, and two boys that's got season tickets to them.
She's got a contract. That was a WVU fan.
Okay, well, Allegheny County is going to be utilizing state aid funding as a AD/20 program to rehabilitate some of the county roads in the area. It will be Leveil Court, Parkside Boulevard, Workfield Place, U-Hope Road, and the Upper Potomac Industrial Park Road. These were approved as part of the capital improvement program earlier approved this year, and we are requesting for the low bid to be awarded to Belt Paving Inc. of Cumberland. And how's it you guys feel about?
Is there any discussion or questions, gentlemen?
This will take place this year before the end of the county year, or is this going to be a spring project?
Right now, it's looking to be planned for this year. Depending on scheduling, it could be pushed to next spring, although we are absolutely pushing for this year.
And this is regular paving, not tarred and shit?
Right, regular paving.
I'll make a motion that we accept later in town.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move into our complete agenda now, Dick.
Mister's, good evening. This evening, we have seven items on our agenda for you to review and consider. We have Item Number 11. Mister's, Item Number 11, on your consent agenda this evening, is a motion to accept the county's FY 2015 Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $92,556. This fund supports the county's efforts to enhance communications, emergency preparedness, and planning activities. Mister's, Item 12 is a motion to authorize a request or proposals to replace our console furniture at the county's dispatch center in Constitution Park in Alito, Mexico. This procurement will be funded entirely by the State of Maryland Emergency Numbers Board. Items 13 and 14 are motions to purchase a full-size SUV for the Department of Public Works, and to purchase two new dump trucks for our roads to do. Item 15 is a motion to abate taxes on two properties located on Pine Avenue in Cumberland, which have been acquired by the mayor and city council, and are scheduled to be raided. Commissioners, Items 16 and 17 are travel requests for both Richard DeVor and Steve Hout. Mr. DeVor will be attending a symposium in November, and Mr. Hout will be attending a train emergencies class in Atlanta in October. The cost associated with Mr. Hout's travel is being funded entirely by CSX, mister. That's all I have for you, and your consent agenda, please.
Any discussions or questions about these items?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Some moves.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
County Attorney, you've got two words left.
I used up all my words, I have nothing else for you.
No comment, we're done. Commissioner's Statements. Jake, do you have any statements for this?
Yeah, the one thing that I think the public's seen, that we've seen, is the new development going on across the county, specifically in Leveil, and it seems like state highway under this new administration's finally hitting rolling, and I know that Commissioner Brody, Commissioner Valentine, myself, have all had conversations, and we've been able to make a lot more progress this past six months, I would say. Not the very beginning, but this first six months where they pushed the permitting back to locals, and so, we're seeing a holiday in, the grand opening's tomorrow, Cracker Barrel's coming in in May, all-new Winchester Court Sheets, and some other properties that they're working on, and it seems like there's been more commercial development in the past six months than there has been in decades. Decades, exactly. So, that's something to be proud of, for our area to see some growth. And the other thing that our Economic Development Department has done, has created a four-page flyer, it's a promotional packet for the county, basically, a fact sheet of where we are, what we can offer, and that's going to be available to businesses that might want to locate in the county. So, I don't know if it's on the website yet, but I can give you a copy, if you get the press copy of that.
Thank you.
I first want to thank Mayor Blair for letting us be up here this evening, and it's good to see so many people here that I've known for most of my life, such as Councilwoman Ty, Natalie Ty, she's always been there to keep me straight, and I still speak with her quite regularly. You know, Midland is very special to me, since the road right down the road down here includes Meadows, named for my family, and my mother and father both grew up here and worked here, and this is where I grew up. So, there's no other town in Allegheny County that I know on homecoming, they have you down for a ballgame, don't cause nothing to play, feed you all day long, give you drinks, don't cause not a cent to play, so I think that's very commendable for this little town that is putting everything it has just to stay afloat, so I know how hard it is for them to keep going. Second of all, we also, tonight, I don't want to forget, that we have a former commissioner from the town of Frostburg sitting here, which I've also known most of my life, that actually, I started working with Doug when I was 18 years old, so Doug Lumber, it's good to see you here, sir.
It's good to see you guys. Yeah, our first time together, we were down there building the Cranberry Mall in Westminster.
Yeah, a few years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Thanks Doug for coming. That's all I've got to say, sir. It's just good to see everyone tonight.
To sort of expand on what Jake was saying, there really is more dirt flying in this county than there has been a long, long time, and it's just the tip of the iceberg. Whenever some of the additional announcements start coming out, I think people are going to be really surprised. Two stores haven't been named yet for the Winchester Mall, but those stores are already spoken for, they're taking, every space there is rented, and basically, there's some development just about every part of the county coming, except the far eastern part of the county, but there's a lot of development on the way. With development comes jobs. With more jobs, you have a lower unemployment rate, the lower the unemployment rate, the higher the wages have got to be, because you've got competition for labor. Using some of the rotten gap funds for helping our local students get college degrees right now, we've got like 600 or some students attending ACM in Frostburg, and a lot of them wouldn't be there if it wasn't for those scholarships. So, we're definitely moving forward, moving in the right direction, and the county commissioners can't take credit for that. It's people like our Economic Development people, people like Dick DeBoer, his agency, people like to share. So, you know, there's a lot of thanks to go around for everything that's happening in this county. So, we have a couple of people signed up for constituent statements. First is Ms. Darlene Park. Please, I'm up there and standing up, everybody else has to. State your name and your address, and we have five minutes. Spill your guts out.
Bill, can you put me on the line? I didn't know there was a slot.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Kirby Darlene Park, I live at 16245 Harwood Drive, southwest Frostburg, Maryland, and I am a spokesperson today for the Allegheny Neighbors and Citizens for Homeowners' Rights Anchor. We have been making the residents of Allegheny County aware of Dan's Mountain Wind Force request for a special exception, caring to build 17 turbines on Dan's Mountain. The Allegheny County Board of Zoning Appeal will conduct a hearing on October 27, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds for three days. I am requesting that the Allegheny County Commissioners grant permission for Mr. Dave Dorsey and Mr. Richard DeVor, of the county staff, to be present at the hearing date to answer technical questions if there should arise anything.
Dave.
Commissioners, the county staff will be there that day. Technical questions related to this project that may be addressed to the board will be controlled entirely by the board themselves and the legal council. So, I'm not so sure that the request is being directed to a appropriate body at this time, but they will be available.
Well, I spoke with someone at the county, and they told me, I asked them, what, I said, we would like to have, we need some clarifications, and I was told, and I said, that person told me at the county that I needed to request that, and it came from the county commissioners, because Mr. DeVor and Mr. Dorsey, they are employees of the county.
Well, we will certainly have staff available to answer questions at the discretion of the attorney and the members of the board, and it's either a separate quasi-judicial board. The only thing that this body does is appoint members to that board, they are entirely independent, so we will pass that request along to a board.
Thank you very much.
The question would have to come from the judges, the zoning board.
That would have to come from him, you're saying?
The zoning board.
The zoning board.
Yeah, we don't want to put our people in a way that, you know, everybody gets a talking rights.
So, what you're saying, if the zoning board judges have questions, they can ask... So what you're saying, if the zoning board judges have questions, they can ask.
County staff will be available.
Will be available. Thank you very much.
Sheriff Roberts.
Thank you, commissioners. Up here. Just like everybody else.
I thought maybe you needed some glasses.
I need gloves.
Got to get your smiling face on.
Exactly, exactly. Commissioners, on Thursday, September 17th, at the Allegheny County Commissioners Meeting, topic of a grant was brought up under the consent agenda. This grant listed as item 11, Underage Drinking Prevention Grant. Board of County Commissioners to authorize the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office to receive and utilize a $10,000 grant, funding made available by the Allegheny County Health Department for fiscal year 2016. This funding will be utilizing overtime deputies to provide underage drinking prevention services, example of alcohol sale compliance checks. At this same public meeting, Commissioner Shade said that he had received two complaints from local businesses claiming they were treated unfairly during the underage drinking prevention grant, which my office conducted. During the discussion in the meeting, Commissioner Shade made numerous accusations, deflamatory, and attacked the reputation of every deputy in my office. You stated that deputies purchased alcoholic beverages at the bar area, then returned to the table, placing the alcohol in front of an underage individual. This is not true. These remarks accuse my deputies of falsifying reports and arrests when charging businesses who were caught serving alcohol to underage individuals. As I recall, several months ago, you approached me, Commissioner Shade, about a complaint you received in regards to underage citation received by a local restaurant in the Leveil area. You advised me that you had received this complaint from a friend of yours who was either the manager or assistant manager of that business. You verbally provided me with the information given to you by your friend. At that time, I was able to bring Lieutenant Randy Cutter into my office, who oversees the underage alcohol grant, along with Deputy Gary Crowe, who was one of the deputies who had worked this particular case. They provided and reviewed the incident with you, giving you the following information. At approximately 6:20 p.m. on February 12th, 2015, a plainclothes deputy, along with an eighteen-year-old male, entered this particular restaurant bar and seated themselves at the bar. It was the eighteen-year-old who ordered the alcohol himself, for himself and the deputy, not as you stated at the public meeting. He ordered a large draft Budweiser and a small draft Bud Light. The report further stated that the bartender then handed the underage individual a large Budweiser and placed a small Bud Light in front of the deputy. Both drinks totaled $8.17, including tax. The underage individual then gave the bartender a $20 bill, which had previously been provided to him by the deputies. The bartender then took the money and provided the underage individual $1.83 and change. A short time later, the underage individual entered the restroom of the restaurant and disposed of the alcoholic beverage prior to leaving the establishment. Commissioner Shade, it appears that the information you provided to public at last Thursday's meeting came from a friend. The manager was not even present during the incident. He had no direct knowledge and was only going by what his employee told him. Last year, the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office conducted 220 checks of businesses in the fall for underage sales of alcohol. Only thirteen were found to be in violation. This past spring, 279 checks were made of these businesses, with only seven being found in violation. Numerous businesses were presented certificates of appreciation by the Allegheny County Health Department and me for not violating these laws and helping to keep our kids safe. Every member of my office works hard to maintain the positive presence in our communities to protect and serve the citizens. Every member of law enforcement community, whether a police officer, a deputy sheriff, or state trooper, relies on their integrity, which is defined as the quality of being honest and having a moral, strong moral principles each and every day to perform their job and is part of being law enforcement. When that credibility no longer exists, the officer loses the respect of their community. That is why honesty means so much to us. We do not receive any extra money for making arrests. The violator usually comes back home and is out on the street while we remain in our office completing the necessary and required forms. In my eyes, it's sad to see someone in your position, Commissioner, made public accusations about a law enforcement agency because two people alleged, which also means said without proof, to have taken place, to have been mistreated. In my thirty-six years of law enforcement, I have arrested and charged numerous individuals who felt they were innocent and did nothing wrong. Ultimately, the courts decide guilt or innocence. In most of these cases, the Allegheny County Liquor Board makes that decision. I wanted to make sure that the public knew that also the one business that you referred to last Thursday was found guilty of serving alcohol to an underage individual by the Liquor Board in July of this year. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
I'd like to recognize Doug Bupel that has strayed in a little bit late, but thank you for coming.
I think he was here early.
I've been here since you started. It's kind of a small room.
Oh, we've got a bunch of rooms.
Yeah, now the folks in the front moved out, we can all come in. Thank you.
Okay, now Doug Lammer.
Hey, guys. One thing I wanted to bring up is.
You had to play by everybody else.
Name and address.
Doug Lammer, 223 McCullough, Frostburg. The issue I'd like to talk about is the high school thing. There is one thing that I have not heard brought up in this whole debate. Monday, the parent company of Luke Mill, Verso, was thrown off the stock market. You guys probably know about this. As of this morning, their stock was trading at three cents. The company, it certainly looks like the mill is going out. Unless some miracle happens, we're going to be hit with a major plant closing. And one thing you have to factor in, along with the mill, is the timber cutters, the coal miners, the truck drivers, and Kingsford. So my worry is, you know, we go ahead and build another high school and the mill closes and we have a pretty big exodus from the county, here we're going to be stuck with a high school for the next week. So I think it's something that needs to be considered, you know. And it's one thing I have not heard so far. I mean, the first quarter of the mill, Verso, lost $112 million. So, you know, all the good news you guys were reporting on was great, but we're going to get hit really hard here pretty soon, it looks like.
Doug, two things you have to realize. The mill up there, they've dropped in the stock prices because of the merger. That's not unusual because they spend so much money. I've been at meetings with the leadership of that mill. Mr. Erble has been to those meetings. You wouldn't believe the capital improvement budget they've got for that mill. They're dedicated to be here and have, because of what old Verso's done doing there already, they've actually been approached by another paper company wanting to buy that mill.
Right, well, right now it's three cents.
Yeah, that's Verso as a whole. It's sort of like, if you look at the group that bought the gap, stocks drop whenever you do a merger. And then they slowly come back up. I appreciate your concern and we're looking at all aspects of the school. We're looking at all aspects. But the mill, I would hate to start a rumor in the public that the mill's going out because that mill, they're dedicated and that mill's got a bright future as it looks right now.
I hope you're right, Bill, that when you see a parent company of the mill is trading at three, you know, they threw it in the OTC trash can. And so it looks like the only hope is if it falls into bankruptcy, which it looks like it's going to, there might be someone there to buy.
Commissioners, if I can interrupt this here briefly. Yesterday, I met with Alan Sanders, the superintendent of the mill. The mill is not going to close. Verso Corporation invested $8 million in the month of August, a boiler recovery system there. And the only challenge that we heard yesterday is that several of the mill employees are reaching the age of retirement and they're looking to be hiring some folks from all across the country, from both Maine and Kentucky, to fill some of these retirements. So just to, that's not a discussion we should be having here this evening and folks, I don't want you to leave here with the impression that that mill is going to be closing and that foreclosure might be imminent. That is not the case.
Secretary Gill, D-Vet, visited that mill a little week ago. He was very impressed. He had some financial numbers. Like I said, whenever you have a merger like that and that parent company quits all money into their acquisition, stock's always going to drop. You can't.
And that merger took place last year, Bill, over a year ago.
Yes, but you've got to see the capital improvement budgets.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not hoping or even predicting that it's going, but when you see stock prices get three cents.
We appreciate your concern very much.
We appreciate that, but the stock market doesn't tell the story.
Not the entire story.
It tells a lot.
Sheriff. Sheriff, I just want to be clear, you know, we should be cracking down on these places that are serving underage. I'm in complete agreement with you. And I just want to make clear, I was contacted by two businesses and I take your word for it, I take your men's word for it. And that's what was relayed to me and I regret that if I expressed it incorrectly at a public meeting. And we should crack down, absolutely. But the way that it was expressed to me, that it was carried out, I have a problem with that. And if that wasn't true, then so be it. And I don't know, would you agree if your men did carry it out that way, that would be not right?
I wouldn't even take that consideration if my men would do that.
If some other county did it that way, I mean, would that be a...
It's illegal to do it that way. So that's why I would not ever expect any of my officers to ever act that way or conduct business that way.
Right. I appreciate that. And I'm sorry we didn't get to talk about this beforehand. I mean, we voted on the grant.
Well, we did talk about it before, mister, because you came to my office and I explained and I had everybody that was involved. You asked the questions and I was, I even gave you the file and showed you the reports and everything.
You gave me the file, but that was it. I mean, it wasn't, that was it.
I wonder what else I can give you that point, sir. I understand.
Well, I think we, you know, we agree now and we agree on ninety-nine out of a hundred things, but I mean, that's something that...
I respect everything out of the county commissioners and we, over the past four-plus years that I've been here, I think we've been leaps and bounds with the relationship between the sheriff's office and the county. I think we have probably one of the best relationships in the state of Maryland, I think, this year, you know, with the relationship, you know, compared to what we used to. And I want to continue that relationship with the county.
Wonderful.
I can guarantee it, Sheriff, your department has the full support with the county commissioners, including Mr. Shade. There's no problem with the support from the county commissioners for our sheriff's department and we really do respect all the fantastic service that you provide for this county.
And you represent everyone? I represent everyone in this county and, you know, when you have business owners come saying stuff to you, I mean, I felt like I needed to speak out and say something, whether it was right or wrong.
The next time, if you have any information or anything, go over to my office, I would respectfully request anybody to contact me first and I'd be more than happy to sit down and show you everything that I have. I have nothing to hide.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sheriff. And thank you all for coming.
Okay. Want to remind everybody that our next business meeting will be Thursday evening, October 8th, at the Commissioners' Chamber and at the County Commissioners' Hall. And remember the hazardous waste collection day. And with that, the meeting is over. Thank you all.